Hi, good afternoon. I'm going to call together the Monday, November 4th, Special Meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Councilmembers in attendance include Councilmember Fields, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Sal Houdin, Council President Kritzer, Councilmember Nueva Camina, and myself, Councilmember Stewart. We have eight items on the agenda today. The first seven are with our friends in planning and community development. We are going to start the agenda today by switching items one and two. We're going to switch items one and two. So item number two today is an update on the bike and scooter share permit fees. Introducing this item will be Deputy Director Seraphie Allen.
Thank you, Councilmember. Today, we are seeking council's approval for a resolution proposing two additional fees to the shared micro mobility program as part of the consent agenda during the November 19th business meeting. I will now turn it over to Francesca Libriti, our Senior Transportation Planner, to provide more details.
All right. Thank you, Seraphie. So after launching in summer 2019, the micro mobility pilot program, also known as the Bike and Scooter Share Program, has been a successful first-to-last-mile mobility option for Redmond community members from 2019 through this year, 2024. Last year, in 2023, city staff received direction from council to transition the program from a pilot to permanent program status with some enhanced requirements. And the permanent program with Lime as a primary vendor is set to begin on January 1st, 2025. So based on coordination with our vendor Lime, as well as some research of best practices with other local agencies, staff are requesting to add a per-vehicle and a per-trip fee to the program fee schedule, excuse me, program fee schedule. The additional fees would include a 15 cent per-trip fee and a $50 annual per-vehicle fee that will go toward offsetting staff time for program management. Both fees would be paid by Lime to the city on a prorated quarterly basis. And based on an estimate of Redmond's ridership data during the pilot program, these fees would generate approximately $20,000 annually in per-vehicle fees and approximately $25,000 annually in per-trip fees. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Stewart to facilitate any questions.
Thank you so much, Francesca. Are there any questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So I was looking through the, all the fees and all the different rules and restrictions. I didn't see anything about a bad parking fine for the user. Was that something you guys discussed? I know it's something we've talked about on council for a while, of how to get people to actually park properly. I saw there were other things in there to get them to do so, but...
Yeah, so we primarily discussed with Lime some geo-fencing. So there's areas where it's unable, you're unable to park a scooter or Lime bike based on geo-fenced that Lime does, so you're physically unable to park them there. We also have, the user has to take a photo before parking, so there are some of those regulations there. We don't have a fine, per se. That's something we could discuss. The program is a two-year contract for the program, so we would be reevaluating again in two years.
Okay. Sorry, I'll also add that we talked about, in addition to the geo-fencing thing, about particular places for parking. So we, Lime is working with Sound Transit around dedicating spaces for them to be able to park their vehicles, which would help with some of that.
Stations, specifically.
Stations as well. So high-parking areas geo-fenced for parking and then restricted areas throughout the city as well?
Yes.
And is the picture-taking, I thought the picture-taking part of it was already a thing, or was that optional?
Yes, that should already be a thing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer.
So I'm curious with these fees. So essentially, this is the structure that we're going to use. Is there an additional fee that they'll have to pay overall to be able to deploy in the city, or is this is essentially what determines it, based on how many vehicles they deploy, and then obviously the number of trips?
Yeah, both. So we have some administrative, like administrative fees that are one-time at the start of the program. So yes, there would be a fee to Lime that they, that they'll pay at the start of the program just to operate. And then we'll have the per-vehicle and per-trip fees that would be, come in quarterly. It would be prorated based on the number of vehicles that are deployed and then, then the number of trips, essentially.
Okay. And then, as you mentioned, it will be Lime that pays this, but do we have any sorts of assurances from them in terms of what rates they'd charge to the consumers, especially given the per-trip fee? Or will they be building that into kind of each trip as a fee on those who use the Lime
So over and above what would already be allowed as the eight per lot. And so they, so they are going to get a density bonus to start with. And through neighborhood planning, corridor planning, it would be at the option of the council with the recommendation of the Planning Commission to, to consider additional rezones in the future.
I guess I'll just put it out there now that I'm in favor of considering those rezones for a lot of the ones, especially along the corridors and thinking there's, there's a spot particularly toward going up Educational Hill that would make a lot of sense because there's multifamily across the street, just down the road a little bit. And then there's a couple in Rose Hill I'm thinking of as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm because it very well have been my hearing, but I thought that I heard for consent on February 19th and wanted to just make sure that it is scheduled for November 19th.
I'm not sure what I said, but November 19th.
And I'm not sure what I heard, but I just want to make sure that we're covering all of the bases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President Kritzer.
Just two, two kind of minor things. One is in terms of what will be attached on the 19th, will we have all of these attachments as part of that item? Because I know sometimes, and this is obviously not the, the planning staff's issue, when we, with Granicus, sometimes we see something in committee and then when we actually go to vote on it, it becomes like a single memo. So I do want to make sure that all the things we're voting on are connected to the item when we, we vote on it.
The ordinances, the resolution, and all of their exhibits will roll forward onto the agenda for November 19th.
Great. And then my second question is, I think it's number six of, of the attachment, which is the 300-plus page, 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Is that, that's the combo of all the different pieces, although we do have various pulled out? Are all those incorporated within that, that draft as well? Although I guess there are some that are.
So I've cut up to you, number 16. Can you restate the question for me?
The Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan, I think it says Attachment C Exhibit 2.
Uh huh.
I just wanted to confirm. So we look at the final, as, as we review the final document?
So that, that is the entire comprehensive plan except for two things. One is the neighborhoods element, which is Attachment C Exhibit 1, because that's being amended rather than repealed and replaced. And the second part is the Shoreline Master Program, which isn't in here because it's not being amended at all. It's just being rolled forward into the new plan because the Shoreline Master Program's on a different update schedule.
Can you remind us when, when that update is?
I will find out for you. I don't have the date.
I'm just, I'm curious about that. Great. Just wanted to make sure we're all clear about what, what we're looking at as we're approving this. I did notice there was one part in that document that said content to be added, I think it was just in the acknowledgements. But I did want to make sure, are there any other places that you plan to make additional changes before we make the adoption?
If we can help it. But we are going to do the acknowledgements page.
Okay.
And anything that we, I really would not like to make any changes at this point because now you've seen it all. But beyond the paragraph for 338 for MFTE that I read a little bit earlier, it's just the acknowledgements page. And if there is anything else, we'll just need to let you know ahead of time so that you know what you're voting on. We're really trying to avoid that.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for your incredibly hard work over all these years on this. Really excited to adopt.
Thank you. Councilmember Saludin.
Yep. Thank you all so much. Just wanted to follow up on Council Vice President Forsyth's comment regarding the faith-based institutions. And my question would be around the outreach that you may or may not have done to all of these faith-based organizations that are listed. And if that was done, did you ask if there was potential for them to want to expand or, or add housing? I know we received at least one email from an organization, which I think they're moving from one court to another, so it's not, they are not affected because they have the opportunity, but there is interest to, to add housing outside of Overlake Christians. So I just wanted to, to gauge what outreach has been done and see if, you know, we could have that opportunity to, or the provision to look at this later.
Well, we can definitely look at it later. In terms of outreach, there were a lot of different outreach methods and topics over the course of the plan update. I don't know that we did a mailing or any, like, anything that was very specific to housing density for faith-based organizations, but the, but the result of the plan update will be that any faith-based organization in a neighborhood or residential zone will be eligible for a, a density bonus of 100%.
Which is, which is also great. And if we have the opportunity to communicate that out to these organizations, that would be awesome as well.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate all the work over the past couple of years. And this is probably more of a budget question than a comp plan question. But in, in all of the changes and all of the things that we're going to enact over the years, there's the compliance part, the enforcement part, the monitoring part. Have we, do we, with all of these changes, do we think that we've captured being able to do that staff-wise and resource-wise in the budget? Or are those things that we're going to be looking for in the years ahead?
I think it's probably both and. You know, the, some of the, some of the more near-term things that immediately come to mind are like, things like parking. So you've talked about parking in the budget, and Seraphi is the most familiar with the budget, could probably add some more. But I think it's going to be, there are going to be near-term things, and then there will be longer-term things that will come up in future years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and hop in with my comments. Really excited to see this on our agenda on the 19th. And thank you for clarifying how we will see that. My question is on behalf of the public or for the public's benefit. First of all, I think that they belong at the very top of the acknowledgement page. Thousands of residents have helped build this amazing plan. And, and to the point about that, that document that has the comprehensive plan, that is a currently Attachment C Exhibit 2, I'm curious when we'll see that plan make it to the Redmond 2050 webpage, for instance, or if it will be communicated about in a, in a special way. I understand that most of this is just going to fall into our consent agenda, but how are we thinking about making sure the public is able to see that more comprehensive document?
Yeah, a few ways. So one is that in the lead-up, in our, in our e-newsletters, we've definitely been advertising that this is happening on November 19th, so there is already some awareness out there. We will endeavor to get the webpages updated with the comprehensive plan document, at least as a PDF, in the short term. And then in the, kind of the medium term, in the, over the course of months, we'll be building out a new comprehensive plan webpage that can, that is more, the PDF will be available for everybody who loves PDF. But there will also be the ability to dig into the plan without using the PDF and just going into topics.
Great.
We'll probably see that in the beginning part of 2025.
Okay. Wonderful. With that, Redmond City Council, are there any objections to sending our comprehensive plan, Redmond 2050, to our consent agenda on November the 19th? Awesome. We're excited to be there with you all. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your work on this. As we quietly move on to our next item, and we are running a tad bit behind, so here we go, on to item number three. This is Development Impact Fees, 2025 Annual Indexing. And sticking with us is Deputy Director Allen. Thank you.
Thank you. Each year, as you know, council has the authority to index impact fees for inflation. Glenn Coyle is here today to brief council members on the proposed impact fee changes in 2025 to account for inflation. In addition, new transportation impact fee rates will be adopted. Staff from Transportation Planning and Engineering and the Fire Department, as well as representatives from Lake Washington School District, are also available to answer questions in those areas. I'll turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you, Seraphi. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner. Seraphi noted, impact fees are one-time charges collected by the city from new commercial and residential developments to fund fire, parks, school, and transportation facilities needed to accommodate growth. Impact fees are authorized in Redmond Municipal Code, RMC 310. Indexing or updating Redmond's impact fees annually allow the rates to keep pace with inflation, to maintain the purchasing power of these impact fees, and to help provide the capital facilities necessary to serve growth in Redmond. RMC 310 establishes the indices and procedures that the city council may apply annually to index or update Redmond's impact fees. The city collects school impact fees as a pass-through entity on behalf of the Lake Washington School District by inter-local agreement. School impact fees reflect a proportional share of the costs of school-related system improvements that are reasonably related to new development. The school district calculates and updates these fees annually as part of its capital facilities plan. So for 2025, park impact fees will increase by 6.36%, and for school impact fees, single-family homes will increase from $5,149 to $5,972 per unit, and fees for multifamily units will decrease from $352 to zero. Also to note, fire impact fees will not be indexed in 2025. Fire is updated in its functional plan. It will include an impact fee rate study with the proposed new fee schedule based on capital needs related to growth. Transportation fees are proposed to be updated through Redmond 2050. It would be based on the new transportation facilities plan that is part of the Redmond 2050 adoption package that you previewed earlier. Those fees will become effective in 2025. So with this, we are just asking also this to be included on consent agenda, and I believe the ordinance is included with the Redmond 2050 package. So that concludes my remarks and happy to defer back to you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? I predict one. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. A question on the, the fee of 352 for multifamily units decreasing down to zero, understanding that it is a pass-through and that that was an agreement between the city and Lake Washington School District. Just for our listeners to, to better understand, because typically we see fees increasing, and this one was a decrease. So just for a, a quick Cliff Notes version of, of why we decreased from 352 down to zero.
Yeah. So Brian Buck from the Lake Washington School District is on Teams here, and he can help answer that in a lot better detail than I could. So, Brian?
Yeah, thank you. So there's a couple of things. We utilize a standard King County formula, which requires growth at each level to include into the school impact fee. So at our elementary school and middle school levels, they are not included into the calculation due to declining enrollment and lack of growth-related need. So the key drivers of the change, for multifamily, the student generation rate decreased, that decreases the rate. The multifamily assessed value increased, which increases the tax credit, which drives down the fee. And state assistance cost allocation increased, which also increases the tax credit, which decreases the fee. So ultimately, you combine all of those things into the calculation, and it impacts the fee. But ultimately, we are only able to include the, the enrollment increases associated with the high school level. So that is, in essence, is why the multifamily fee is now at zero currently. The previous year, it decreased significantly for similar reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. And council, I know this is the hottest question on the topic. So are there any follow-up questions specifically related to this topic? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
I'd be happy to email it, the question, the follow-up questions that I have so that we can keep it going.
Oh, okay. Okay. Other questions on the impact fees for Mr. Buck or the team? Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested if, to know on, just on the school impact fees, what the estimated decrease in impact fee revenue to the schools is, just so we're aware of, of the impacts of, of those changes. Well, I can understand that it has to align. I'm, I'm not sure that I, I would love to also, if possible, get any more in detail on how the math worked out to get it to zero, but just so that, that we have full information, especially if we're asked by the community about this, this topic. I have one other question, if the chair won't.
Sure, Cap.
I do see the, under transportation impact fees, daycare center impact fees listed. There's a footnote about the ability for us to waive those impact fees, which I know has been a, that qualifying daycare centers. Can you just explain exactly how that, that will work? Because I know, I know that's part of what we're, we're adopting as, as part of 2050 is, is those abilities for us to exempt qualifying daycare centers, but it's just not clear to me how that, that works.
I'll have to look up the footnote first.
I'm also happy for you to follow up on that one as well.
Yeah, maybe we'll follow up with you on that one.
Yeah. Because it, it does seem like it, it could be a significant way for us to reduce the barrier, which is why I'm glad that we're, we're taking that action. But I'd like to understand how it would work. Thanks.
Okay. So we have two requests for additional information, one on the calculation that got to zero on the school impact fee for multifamily, and then the second on how it will work for the exemptions for qualifying daycare centers. Are there additional questions for the staff at this time? Okay. Seeing none, this is slated for consent on November 19th. Pending delivery of that information, is council okay with this item going to consent? Or would anyone like to hold it in some other way? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move that to consent, but expect the follow-up on those two items shortly. Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate everyone hanging in here. And thank you, Mr. Buck, if you are still here. Item number four today is authorize the city to enter into an interlocal agreement, CM 24528, pooled human services contracts. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Seraphi Allen.
Thank you. Brooke Buckingham is here this afternoon to present an opportunity for the city to partner with Kirkland and other East and North King County cities. This partnership will create efficiencies for nonprofits that the city funds. It has a boring title, but as I said, a very efficient and helpful service to our nonprofits. So Brooke.
Good afternoon. The city has been participating in an arrangement known as pooled contract program for over 20 years. This program creates an opportunity for human services agencies that receive funding from Redmond and/or other participating cities to sign a single contract with the lead city administering the program. Our hope is that this saves significant staff time for agencies involved negotiating individual scopes of work as well as processing invoices. Just to give you some context, under the current pooled arrangement, Bellevue holds 16 agency contracts. Without the pool, this would equate to 95 separate contracts. There are 56 individual scopes of work in a pool. Without the pool, there would be 218 individual programs that would negotiate these scopes, and then 218 individual checks processed by agencies and cities each quarter. Until now, the participating cities include Redmond, Kirkland, Sammamish, Isakua, Kimara, and Shoreline, with Bellevue holding the contract on behalf of these cities. Bellevue will be discontinuing its role as the lead city at the end of its year, and Kirkland has agreed to take over as the lead administrator, which is why we are bringing forward a new, excuse me, interlocal agreement. Kirkland is estimating an admin fee of almost $9,000 per year. The exact amount depends on how many contracts we include in the pool. We've already planned for this cost, and it has been included in the 25, 26 proposed budget. This agreement requires council approval, and that is why we are asking that this item be placed on the 12, 3, December 3rd consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Buckingham. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Fields.
The obvious. You know, Bellevue didn't want to do it. Kirkland has agreed to it. How was that decision made? They agreed to it with who? Was there some committee's process, hey, Kirkland, we'd love for you to take the lead on this? Or did they just say, hey, we'll do it?
So Bellevue's decision to withdraw was in part due to a lot of extra process pieces for their finance staff, so it's really administratively burdensome for them to administer. And also that translates to contract requirements for the pooled agencies. So they notified of that change a year ago, and then that started with a conversation of, is there any other cities that would want to step up into a swell? And really, based on the size of the cities, Redmond and Kirkland is best placed to take that on. But Kirkland actually has additional staff, so they agreed to start those conversations. We've been in conversation for quite some time, but we're just now coming forward with the finalized interlocal.
So all of the cities have had input into this decision?
Definitely.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Are there any objections to this item going to consent on December the 3rd? All right. Thank you, Ms. Buckingham. Thank you, Deputy Director Allen. Okay, council, we are moving on to item number five, which is a resolution to adopt project review provisions for prompt coordinated review in conformance with Senate Bill 5290. Introducing this item will be Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development. Welcome.
Thank you, councilmember. Good evening all. I am Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development Director, and we've seen you over the last few months to brief you on the process improvements necessary to meet the legislative mandates of Senate Bill 5290. If permit review timelines are not met under the terms of that legislation, the city would be required to reimburse a portion of the fees unless we identify additional measures contemplated in the Senate bill that would allow us to avoid that. Though, on October 8th, staff proposed the additional measures to the city council during the Committee of the Whole meeting, and that we felt we could be, that we could adopt in order to avoid having to pay the refund fees. This is not to be confused with us trying to get away with not meeting the timelines. We are still committed to trying to meet the timelines. It's a safety net for us. And our developers have noted that the timeline compliance is actually better for them than getting the fees refunded, and that they felt the refund of fees was really antithetical to what we were trying to accomplish with respect to improvements on our permitting performance. So council had requested staff to draft the necessary resolution and bring it forward for council review at the November TPW Committee of the Whole meeting where we are this evening. And the required resolution is provided for you in Attachment A to your packet, and we're seeking council direction to place this on the council agenda for approval as a component of the 2025-2026 biennial budget package.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Is this contingent on the decisions we made a couple of weeks ago for, like, around the design reboard and all of that?
Uh, no, this is, no, it is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer.
So just to be clear in terms of the, the cost for, the costs that are indicated in the memo, are the, is the major consulting group contract, is that something that it's up to that amount that we're budgeting as, as needed? Or is it a kind of flat rate type of thing?
It is up to that amount, but I think you might be asking me for the next budget item.
Oh, maybe I did. I was trying to look for the, is that?
The next item is regarding transmittal of some interim deliverables that were from the Matrix Group.
I think it's the, are others looking at the memo? Does, does that appear in the memo?
I'll go ahead and add in. It is under, on page four of this memo, it is under total cost, $145,000, Matrix Consulting Group contract, $250,000 developer user fee update.
Right. So I apologize for that. So the, those enhancements were essentially to reflect the work that we're doing right now. So the one-time service enhancement developer user fee update, that was completed earlier this year. That was the fee study. Council adopted in February time? Oh, no. Actually, it was adopted at the end of 2023 and went into effect in February of 2024. And that was also part of the finance budget. And then the Matrix work is the consulting work that we have engaged a consulting group to help us identify recommendations for further streamlining measures.
Great. Okay. So, so I guess my question would be, since, as you mentioned, the action we would be taking would be affecting the budget, can you just clarify what the impact will be for the 25 to 26 budget?
Got it. So the action you're taking is actually the issue of putting aside some additional FTEs that are unallocated, that would be identified for use as part of the Development Services Fund that could be used, but we would have to come back to council and demonstrate that our permit volumes have increased to a level that we require essentially additional assistance.
Okay. Great. Well, that's the third item, but the second item is an on-call contract or on-call services, and I wasn't sure if that is updated in the budget.
That is not updated in the budget, and it will be updated next year, but it also is budget neutral. So the reason is because we require any individual using those services to pay the full freight of those services.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up. Appreciate it.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields.
Maybe I'm being a bit dense here, but I still am struggling to understand if, why you need a council resolution. How does the lack of a council resolution not limit what the executive office can propose in the budget? You want, you want some unfunded positions available so that when you do enact those positions, you will then come to council with a revenue source, I'm assuming, whatever that is at the time.
It would be fees.
And, and that the reason you want those positions, those, I'm going to call them ghost positions for lack of a better word, now is so that you, that would save you time at the time, meaning you won't have to go through adding those FTEs as a budget amendment. Is that right?
That is one thing, but the more important thing is that we are actually replicating the process we would go through to get approval, but we are also meeting the letter of the law so that we can say that we don't have to refund fees. So it is actually, the resolution is an expression of the steps we're taking to avoid having to pay permit refunds.
And without the council resolution, you're at more risk of paying those?
At the, without the council resolution, I believe what we would have to do is, in every instance where there was a fee dispute and that we had not met the timeline, we would then have to refund, potentially have an argument with the applicant about the need to refund fees. In this case, it is an expression of council support that we have done these things as a way to avoid the issuance of those fees. And it would basically, we would be able to say, these are the things we've done to avoid the fees, and they have been incorporated into our budget, and it's notification to people that we would not have to pay them refunds. It won't stop some people potentially from arguing, but it will stop the vast majority, and that actually is a time-saving, time savings for us.
Okay. I appreciate your answer. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm uncomfortable with that proposal. It sounds like we are trying to avoid directly interacting with people. I would just suggest that something around the lines of what Mr. Fields has suggested is that we would see it later.
Thanks.
Are you suggesting not moving this item to consent, but breaking, breaking it up and into the next year, make, breaking up the decision into the next year?
I'm not totally sure what we're talking about specifically, but it doesn't, something doesn't sit right with me.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions from the council?
Okay. I will go ahead and hop in and just say, one of the things I really, this is new. SB 5290 is new, and we are all, you know, working to be in compliance with this while also meeting our goals. And I just want to share my appreciation for the stakeholders who've participated in the development of, of this proposal, because this demonstrates something other than black and white thinking. It's not do it on time or refund our money because that's nobody's goal. And I just really appreciate those who have been at the table. So the council, the suggestion is to move this item to consent on November 21st with the adoption of the budget, which is also scheduled for the 21st. the adoption of the budget, which is also scheduled for the 21st. Perhaps I'm hearing that this should go to new business. Let me ask it the typical way. Are there objections to this item going to consent on the 21st? Okay, sounds like we will go to consent, and if someone would like to pull it, they may. Are there other, Councilmember Fields?
Since this ends up being a budget item, and it's possible we need to add this to our deliberations discussion, and, and then make a decision about consent.
Okay, there is a proposal to add this to our council budget deliberations on November the 12th. Is there interest in that? Let's like use our rule of thumbs, I suppose. Is there interest in that? Okay, I am seeing four thumbs for that. So at this time, what additional information should the staff prepare for those budget deliberations?
For me, I will email, or if the director is open to it, have a discussion.
Great.
I'm happy to accommodate that. I might just let you know that the approach we're taking is one that was discussed broadly as the strategy when this legislation was adopted with all the stakeholders who were at the table with the state when we adopted State Bill or Senate Bill 5290, and that this is the best practice that was identified as well by organizations like MRSC to essentially memorialize the approach that we're taking for clarity and transparency.
Thank you for that, Director Helen. Councilmember Anderson, and then Council President Kritzer.
Thanks. The question that was, what else we needed to see, hiring plan to fill the ghost positions, the amount of revenue projected to pay for them, and when?
I'm allowing just a moment for the staff to scribble their notes. Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, I just wanted to note for my colleagues that I do think that this, because I heard some, some comments around the question for trying to get around the legislation, and I think it's really to act in the spirit of the legislation, to figure out, you know, how it is that we can streamline, you know, processes and, and then be able to also respond, you know, to this legislation in a proactive way that fits well for our city. Because I think sometimes legislation gets passed, and it doesn't fit for every single city. And luckily, they did give the options for us to customize it to each of our city's needs. So that's what I see our staff doing here. I don't, I don't think the, the goal is to get around anything, but really to make sure that it can work well for our city. So look forward to discussing it more during deliberations, but I would encourage everyone to read through and consider that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? Thank you so much to the staff. We appreciate you. Item number six on our agenda tonight is process improvement effort update.
And this is just by way of a transmittal of three documents that have been prepared by Matrix Consulting Group. So remember that council authorized the contract for the city to hire Matrix Consulting Group to provide process improvement services related to the Development Services line of business. And the purpose of the work is to help streamline and improve consistency and predictability of the city's permitting and inspection functions. Three interim deliverables have been completed at this time, the current state assessment, the stakeholder outreach analysis, and best management practices assessment. Those are all included as attachments A through C in your materials, and they're being transmitted at this time for council reference, just to bring you up to speed on where we are in the process, if you would like to read those. The consultant team is in the process of transitioning now to a analysis phase of the scope of their work, and the next steps include draft analysis, findings, and recommendations. And beginning in 2025, we'll look to schedule some time for the consultant to come in and do a presentation on their findings and their recommendations.
Thank you so much. And council, there is no action on these items. Are there questions on the three documents that were transmitted as part of this item today? Seeing no questions, I will just say thank you so much, Director Helen, for sending these along. There's a lot in these documents that are not surprises, but do help us focus. And that is an important step. So look forward to more next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number seven on our agenda today is the Transportation Master Plan status update. Also introducing this item is Director Helen, excuse me.
Thank you very much, council member. Today, we're seeking council's approval and direction to put a staff report on your November 19th business meeting to provide an update on the Transportation Master Plan. As a quick reminder, the TMP, as we refer to, the Transportation Master Plan, is the next layer of strategic and functional planning efforts, which establishes strategies to help the city achieve the vision set out in the comprehensive plan. Staff last provided a status update at the August 5th business meeting, and the Transportation Planning and Engineering Division would like to update the council on the status of the TMP progress, including a detailed review of the strategies included in the curb space and bicycle network chapters. With that, I will turn it over to our Transportation Planning and Engineering Manager, Michael Hints.
Thank you, Director Helen. Michael Hints, Transportation Planning Manager, a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I feel like I've been seeing a lot of you lately. It's great. So in this upcoming staff report, we want to just bring you up to speed on, on where we are at with the TMP update, kind of in the spirit of a quarterly, quarterly update, and also dig a bit deeper into two chapters that have, we've made a lot of progress on, the curb space management chapter and bicycle network strategy. Our discussion of the bicycle chapter will include strategies for achieving Redmond's goal of increasing bicycle trips and reducing vehicle trips. Will also include a map of proposed future bike network, along with near-term funded projects to implement separated bike lanes on Redmond's system in the context of that, that future network, so you can understand what's kind of in the pipeline in the near term to, to build out those, those higher comfort facilities. It will also include a framework for prioritizing the proposed future bike network. Our curb space discussion will focus on Redmond's overall strategy for prioritizing curb space in the public right-of-way, especially on key corridors that have capacity for multiple transportation modes. The TMP curb space chapter will include strategies that will further the city's long-term vision of transportation demand management, while also optimizing the city's parking resources. Strategies include establishing curb space priorities by land use type and primary use, as well as a focus on setting community expectations and promoting a positive attitude around parking and walking to destinations in Redmond's urban centers. I will turn it back to Councilmember Stewart to facilitate any questions.
Great, thank you. And we do have this scheduled as a staff report on November the 19th. There was a matrix that's been started, included in the packet. Does anyone have any additional questions for that matrix or for the staff report on November the 19th? Council President Kritzer?
Just a request, if we're able to fit it in, would be mention, or a little more mention around some of the first last mile pieces that, that we're budgeting for, like the circulator. Since, since we are having kind of the vision of where we're going on transportation, I think it's a key one, and I know it's in the matrix as some questions that council members had asked for. I think the topics you've chosen for deep dive sound really great, but it would also be nice if we could have a slide or two to kind of preview that for the community.
It's also probably worth noting, we actually have several touches set up with you on the Transportation Master Program, and we will be working on the Draft Safer Streets for All Action Plan in January timeframe, for adoption in February, and we also have additional updates scheduled in March, and anticipate that the draft TMP will be updated or available for council approval in the mid-year timeframe, July. So we have plenty of opportunity to provide additional touches as well.
Thank you. Are there other questions for the 19th? I'll go ahead and chime in. I'm really excited for a discussion about how, what is the hierarchy of priorities for our curb space? There's a lot of competition for our curb space out there these days, especially with the delivery of everything out there. So looking forward to that conversation. Great. Okay, we will go ahead and close up this item and see you all back for the staff report on the 19th.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are at time. Our eighth item is a council policy proposal follow-up. Can I just get four thumbs that we would like to continue with this meeting in order to, great, we've got that. Okay. Council Policy Proposal Number Four, Transportation Facilities Plan, CM 24-530, Street Use and Right-of-Way Design. This item's sponsor is Council Vice President Forsyth, so I will turn it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for supporting, bringing this forward for further conversation. I didn't have much else to add, so I'd open it up to questions based on the, the memo and documentation that was provided, and I hoped that there would be staff available to address this topic as well at this time, since that was the direction, I believe, we gave.
Okay. Are there any, I guess we'll go ahead and open it up to a staff response. Welcome, Director Burt, Public Works. Thank you for joining us.
Hello.
Did you have a specific question for the director?
Well, we laid out a very specific proposal and resolution that we had all voted to proceed with moving forward, and I guess looking for an update on how that proceeding forward is going.
I, I believe that we, we moved forward the opportunity to discuss it. We've not adopted a resolution yet. So, Director Burt, do you have a response to the resolution in our packet this evening?
Yes. So the executive's position on the proposed resolution is that what is being requested is already within the authorities and the purview of the Public Works Director, but it's the council's prerogative, if you want to adopt a resolution directing or asking the executive and the Public Works Director to undertake this aspect of work. But the bottom line, from our perspective on the analysis of what's being proposed, is it's not needed.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council for either the sponsor or the staff? Council President Kritzer?
I would ask on the resolution, I understand that perhaps your point of view is that it's not needed. But if the council is going to pursue this, would you have any comments on the resolution or any particular edits? Because I think part of the hope when we first saw this was that we could get staff feedback on the specifics that are laid out in the resolution. And I personally would love to get, if the, if the, what the staff is claiming is that this is already in the purview or that it already exists, I would love to have more information on exactly what the current process is and how this either would deviate or be the same. So I guess it doesn't help me very much to say that you just don't think it's needed.
So the resolution, it, in my opinion, it is a solution chasing a non-problem. There are processes in place stemming everything from design guidelines to management of the right-of-way and what is allowed and not allowed. The proposal of this resolution is in response to one specific issue that has happened within the city of Redmond. In order to solve, if the intent of this resolution is to address one singular problem, this is not the way to do it. Because to solve that singular problem is you have to be able to work in partnership with the people that are being impacted by one particular issue. If it's the intent of the council to direct the executive to take a look at our right-of-way permitting process, which this falls under, that is something that we're happy to come back and walk you through, step by step, what it takes to get a right-of-way permit and/or what kind of activities are managed underneath a right-of-way permit. In this situation, the things that are being asked for, whether it's hardening of the right-of-way, or how do you work with individuals in which to respond to a problem, that's things that we already do with 99.9% of the individuals who come in and apply for a right-of-way permit to address issues within the right-of-way. So that's our analysis at this point. I didn't know in terms of the Hopper process that in this case, we were to write a staff report, and there hadn't been any further conversation about this yet at committee. Happy to provide some more additional information in terms of the right-of-way process, but that's our, our stance right now.
Thank you. And I'll just clarify for the record, for the team, in the agenda setting for this meeting, we did offer the staff, if they wanted to include a response in the packet, and they declined. Councilmember Fields?
I didn't want to cut off Councilmember Kritzer. Did you have follow-up to that? Or, okay. So if I understand what you just said, and I, I may not have, if we hypothetically, council got into our business meeting, somebody made a motion, we pass this resolution, I think what I heard you say is that doesn't change anything that you would do either for this particular situation or for any situation.
Councilmember Fields, it's the prerogative of the council if you so choose to pass a resolution, and what we would do is we would put that on our work plan for analysis next year.
And I appreciate that, but just to go back to the question, what I think I heard you say is the resolution as written would not necessarily change any of the conditions or requirements or circumstances that you would use, that you currently use. I, I just want to be clear that you're saying this resolution would be a waste of our time because it wouldn't change anything. Is that what you've said?
What I would say is that what is being asked for within the resolution are all things that are within the purview of the Public Works Department right now as it comes to right-of-way permits, and that the things that are being asked for can already be accommodated under the current process or current authorities that we have.
That sounds like a yes, that, that would not change anything.
I am not going to pass judgment on whether something's a waste of time by council's action. I'm just telling you that the Public Works Department already has the authority and the purview within our current authorities to be able to address the things that are laid out in this proposed resolution.
So do you have any ideas on how council could write a resolution if in fact what we thought is that the city is not providing enough response and enough cooperation to protect either this business that in your mind, I think you described it as a single solution, or other businesses that might be fearful of similar kinds of crime and the inability to protect themselves from the crime? Do you have anything that you suggest to us that we would rewrite this resolution so that does in fact get us to a stronger commitment to our business community to say, yes, we understand that cars crashing into your building might be a problem that the city can help you with?
We'd be happy to sit down with council to talk through that more in depth. I don't have anything off the top of my head right now.
Councilmember Anderson?
I think Mr. Fields just said it. The problem sounds like cars are driving into the building, and I wanted to make sure that is the purpose of the resolution, that cars are driving into buildings. And then do you understand that to be also the, the purpose of the resolution is to prevent that?
I fully understand that, council member.
Okay. And then is that the purpose of the resolution that you proposed, in short?
It is a sum of how we got here, but it is not necessarily the purpose of the resolution. The purpose of the resolution is to, for council to act on an issue that, that has arisen within our community and to strengthen our permitting process that has been found to be problematic in this particular case, but also I'm certain that, that this is an issue for other folks that are trying to, to get permits for other reasons.
Would you like to be recognized, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I'm sorry to pass that off. I apologize, Ms. Chair. My, my thought on this is that if the problem is people driving into buildings, that perhaps we need to be talking to the Washington Department of Licensing to we need to be talking to the Washington Department of Licensing to get the action of stopping cars from driving into buildings into the permit of the driver's license. So that just seems a little further upstream to actually solve that problem. Meanwhile, I'm happy to also support a resolution that might affirm a direction that you can take if you are stating to us that we can do that now. So, thank you.
Are there other council members who'd like to weigh in at this time? I have a question for the director. Said another way, Director Burt, we currently have a process for permitting temporary uses, such as the one that's been deployed in this case. Is that correct?
Yes.
Has the recent experience shed light on any needed improvements of that process, as maybe a way to say it?
I think, as I mentioned previously, the process works when you have willing partners on both sides. And when someone who is the recipient of a right-of-way permit and is not adhering to the standards of that permit, that's when you get into an issue on permit compliance. So it, it takes equal partnership by the permit grantor, the city, and the permit receiver as well.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, Director Burt, I can't accept that answer, as I've been in the meetings where both sides on this issue have, have been unwilling to move on certain points, and this was a way for us to try to proceed forward, and if you're telling us that council can take this up and vote on this, then it would be my recommendation that we, that we just do it, because it, it sounds to me that no matter what the conversation is in this moment, you're saying that the process as it stands comes down to your, your decision and your department's decision. What I'm hearing from community members is that the process is unclear and the process needs improvement, and I feel like there's always room for improvement within any of our processes, and I don't understand the implications of if we were to go ahead and look at what those process improvements could be and why there would be resistance to that.
And I'm going to respectfully push back, council member, because I don't think you're privy or getting the full issues or information as it relates to this situation. I don't think we want to go into the full details on that, but once again, I will reiterate, when permit conditions are put forward, that 99.9% of everybody else in the city of Redmond can understand and works with us for compliance on these permits, and then the .1% comes back and says, your process doesn't work, I'm not getting what I want. To me, that's not necessarily our permit process and how we're trying to work with the thousands of right-of-way permits that we issue every year, that we don't have this issue. Additionally, as you mentioned in that meeting that we had previously, commitments were made by that other party who now has not followed through on those commitments to work with the city. So once again, if this is the intent of the council to pass this resolution, by all means, that's your purview, and we will put it onto the work plan for 2025 to look at.
All right. Are there questions, Councilmember Fields? Do you have a question for the, okay. Council President Critzer, do you have a question for the sponsor or the staff?
Well, a comment on process going forward. I am disappointed that we didn't get a staff memo, since it sounds like the chair did ask and give the opportunity for staff to respond to this. Since it's, for me, it's difficult to be able to vote on this without having actually a written response of understanding what unintended consequences there might be, not for the situation at hand, but potentially broader to changing our policies or permitting processes. I would love to be able to see that or to be able to understand a bit more from the perspective of the staff in writing, so we actually could read and understand that and take that into account. Although I do also applaud the sponsor for taking an action, putting something forward to try to solve an issue that we're seeing occurring in our community, and I would ask that instead of the answer being either vote it through as is or don't, that we actually get some information from the staff before we would bring this to a vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
So I think that when Councilmember Forsyth sponsored this and I co-sponsored it, the idea, for me anyway, was having witnessed some of the interactions between the business community and the city of Redmond, including being present at a, at a meeting that did not feel very productive to me. And I think that what we had hoped to do with this resolution is give the city the tools to actually, as you pointed out, have both parties working together to solve the problem. So it felt like there were restrictions or constraints that perhaps this resolution could then overcome and, and give us an opportunity to have that broader collaboration, especially given the fact that I don't think three years ago, this was a problem. And I don't, and, but by this discussion and by your response, we are putting in a different situation where you've almost asked us, haven't quite, but you've almost asked us to make a decision or almost a judicial decision of are, is in fact this party being unreasonable or are they not cooperating? And when I, and I don't really want to be in that position, have to determine that, that this, the executive office cannot work with one of our more popular, I guess, downtown businesses. I would think that, that we should be able to do that, and I think our intent was that this resolution would help you do that. Trying to unravel whether the requests you've made for this permit, we've seen emails from the owner of the business that said, those are impossible, we've made it clear those are impossible. For me to try to solve that, not really part of my job. To give you the tools to actually protect our businesses and protect and mitigate crime, that I'm, I'm in favor of. So given all of that, it's not so much unintended consequences that I'm interested in, although I am interested in that. I'm interested in the intended consequences, and the intended consequences is that we do better. So that's why I've asked you the questions I've asked about the resolution. I guess we can just roll the dice, as Councilmember Forsyth said, pass the resolution and see what happens, but I was hoping we could do better.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there other questions or comments from the council? Council President Critzer.
Yes, I would just ask, because I, I think there's an inherent question in my comment of asking whether Director Burt would be willing to provide us with commentary on how this might be applied to other types of scenarios outside of the existing ones, so that way we can go into the vote with full information or understand if there were any amendments to this, this that might ensure that we didn't get ourselves into a tricky situation with other types of permitting processes.
And I'll, I'll go back to the original, one of my original statements, that the executive and the Public Works Department believe that the tools that we have and the processes that we have in place right now and the permitting process already gives us the ability to do the things that are being asked to be looked at in this resolution. So I, I'm happy to commit that to paper and take one more swag at it, but that's, that's the position that we have right now.
Council President Forsyth, Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I agree with Council President Critzer. I would like to see this committed to paper, as you, as you plainly put it, and I would like to see this done with expediency, because we only have about three more meetings left in this year, four more meetings left in this year, and I'd like to see this get resolved before we go on December break.
And council member, when you say resolve, you mean council taking action?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we have a couple of requests to have some, a written response from the staff, and when that's available, it could come back to a council committee meeting or tacked on to a study session, something like that. Is it okay to, since the sponsor is a member of council leadership and helps with the scheduling, is it generally okay to leave that to the, to the council leadership to schedule?
I would ask that it could go on a committee, since our study sessions are all budgeted all the time, if there is room.
Great. Whose committee is next week, and what do you know about your schedule? Okay, we'll, we'll circle back on that.
Are you asking if I would be willing to put that on the finance committee?
Do you know if your agenda's packed next week?
I would put this on the, I would put this on our committee.
Okay. So we'll, we'll tentatively say it's going to be back at FAC next week, provided that staff actually have enough time to do that written response.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Fields, appreciate that. Thank you, Director Burt. And with that, we have come to the end of this agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.